One win.
All right. This special meeting of the Board of Education, November 17th, is called to order. Welcome everyone present and our television viewers. Meeting is being televised. And we're going to start with a resolution, the rights of undocumented students and protocols for ICE access to schools. And I would like to ask Director Sparda-Brown to introduce this resolution for us.
Thank you. Bienvenidos a todos, welcome. There's been a lot of hateful, negative, and scary rhetoric over the past couple of weeks, and with that comes a lot of fear and uncertainty in our community. And so we want to remind the communities that we serve, that Portland Public is responsible for implementing the constitutional requirement to provide all children an education regardless of immigration status, and that our longstanding equity policy in this district is our North Star. Beyond any legalities, we as board members, as citizens of Portland and Oregon, are committed always to providing a safe environment for all our students. Doing so is vital not only to ensuring our students have a supportive environment for learning, but also to fulfill our duty to take care of all the children that parents entrust to us every morning when they send them to our schools. Accordingly, we are proposing a resolution that reinforces our commitment to safe spaces. We are also asking that the acting superintendent establish a process that within 90 days to identify strategies, policy, and staff in the event parents are detained by the Immigration and Customs Enforcement. Wherever one stands regarding these issues, and no matter what political party they align with, it is our hope that we will do, all do our part to ensure that no harm is done to anyone regardless of what's happening at the local level. The most astounding thing about Oregon, as we all know, is how much we value, appreciate, and practice kindness. It's our hope that as young people begin to shine the light of their lives and learn new things, that they will become clearer about who they want to be and what they want to do with their lives, and we will support them. We can't control what happens at the national level, but in our own lives, at work, at school, in our communities, and across our institutions, we can stand up against any racism, sexism, xenophobia, any form of hatred, or notion that would get in the way of practicing what is at the heart of our democracy, that we are all created equal, that we are endowed with inalienable rights. But more simply, it's vital that we be good to each other, take care of each other, and stand up for each other. And regardless of whatever anyone says, whether it's someone in the streets, at work, or in our Oval Office, that we will look out for each other. Even if there's no physical wall, we cannot let walls, invisible walls, be built between us. So instead, we must stand together as brothers and sisters for the betterment of our community and our world. Therefore, we propose the following resolution, and we're going to take turns reading it. I'll start with the recitals. Resolution 5363, Recital A. The Board of Education for Portland Public Schools is committed to the success of every student in each of our schools. The mission of Portland Public Schools is that by the end of elementary, middle, and high school, every student by name will meet or exceed academic standards and will be fully prepared to make productive life decisions. We believe that every student has the potential to achieve, and it's the responsibility of our school district to give each student the opportunity and support to meet his or her highest potential. And by the way, there are copies of the resolution portion in the back that are translated in Spanish.
Item B. The Board believes that the physical safety and emotional well-being of all children in the district, and ensuring that our schools are safe and inviting for all students and their families, is paramount to students being able to achieve. PPS does not tolerate any form of discrimination, harassment, or bullying.
Paragraph C. This safe and inviting environment would be disrupted by the presence of ICE officers who come onto Portland Public Schools' property for the purposes of removing students or their family members, or obtaining information about students and their families.
Item D. The Board further believes that our students' ability to achieve is negatively impacted by the removal of their family members during ICE raids that leave students without supervising adults to care for them, and that the district should have in place policies and procedures to protect and care for such students until a guardian or other designated adult is contacted, and that all teachers, administrators, and staff should be trained on such procedures.
Be it resolved, any ICE officer intending to enter any Portland Public Schools' property must first notify the superintendent and the district's general counsel in person of its intention with adequate notice so that the superintendent and general counsel can take steps to provide for the emotional and physical safety of its students and staff.
The superintendent and/or general counsel are authorized to ask for the ICE agent's credentials, ask why he or she is requesting access, and the legal validity of their request.
ICE officers must provide written authority from the ICE instructing them to enter district property and for what purpose.
Portland Public School staff shall not ask about a student's immigration status or that of the student's family members pursuant to Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. The relevant law shall not disclose without parental consent the immigration status of any PPS student or personal information.
Within the next 90 days, the superintendent shall develop a plan for training teachers, administrators, and other staff on how to respond to ICE personnel who are requesting information about PPS students and families and/or attempting to enter PPS property. The plan shall also include procedures for notifying families about ICE efforts to gain information about students and families, and how to support students whose family members have been displaced because of ICE. This plan shall be communicated to all PPS families in all supported languages.
All right. The Board will now consider Resolution 5363, Rights of Undocumented Students and Protocols for Immigration and Customs Enforcement, Access to Schools. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Director Noel, seconded by Director Sparda-Brown. Two, is there any public comment?
We have two. Rahi Reddy and Octaviano Maresias.
Great.
Do I just sit here? Yeah. Okay. Just making sure.
Welcome.
Hi.
Thank you for coming. You can say your name for the record and then start to speak, and when the light is red, then it's time to wrap it up.
Okay. My name is Rahi Reddy. I'm a new parent in Portland Public Schools, my first ever Portland Public Schools meeting. I'm glad I'm here to speak on something that I support. So first, I wanted to just say thank you so much for this resolution. I think it's been just a little over a week when families have been really just jarred by the recent elections and all of the talk about what's going to happen starting in January. So first, I just want to say thank you, and I'm here representing a number of parents who weren't sure this meeting was happening or not. A number of us got together and they said, "You could go," and so I'm here. So I speak for a number of parents in southeast Portland in our very diverse schools. So first, I want to say thank you so much for putting children and families first before politics, and ensuring that our prime focus in our educational system is to care for the child, care for the families, and to make sure that they have a safe space, not just for education, but for building community. And I also want to applaud that your efforts are similar efforts that are being taken in San Francisco, Los Angeles Unified School District, which is the largest school district in the country, are also updating and moving toward these same policies. So I want to say thank you and for joining with other cities around the country. I also want to acknowledge that what your resolution speaks to is also ensuring our teachers, who are totally strapped because of funding cuts, because we weren't able to pass a funding measure, really get to focus their attention on teaching and making sure the child is able to learn and to deal with all the stresses that come with this current situation. So I want to thank you for not burdening teachers with law enforcement or governmental duties that really is not in their job description. I also want to encourage you in your 90-day plan to really think about how more comprehensive you can be in your strategies of training teachers and schools, to not only focus, of course, on the immediate challenges of ICE raids and law enforcement, but also how to build inclusive schools that support Muslim families and children, transgender children, LGBT youth, kids of color, and other families that will be targeted in the kind of hateful rhetoric we've already seen. So we would love to see our teachers have the resources and support to build those communities even with the environment being the way it is and the way it will be. And then the one minor point I want to make is, in your resolution, you talk about INS. We don't have INS anymore. Okay. So I just want to make sure it's UCIS.
A little proofreading issue.
Right. And to make sure that we not only talk about, not only talk about ICE, but I think it's the UCPB also, which is another form of enforcement agency. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Octaviano Maresias. I'm the Policy and Civic Engagement Manager at Latino Network. I live, pray, play in Portland, and I am a proud member of a community, the beautiful community, the Latino community. Thank you for introducing this resolution and for your strong statement of support that PPS sent to all parents and our communities and students. We are a Latino-led education organization grounded in culture-specific practices and services that lift up the youth and families to reach their full potential. We believe that every student has the potential to motivate, inspire, and transform their lives and their communities, and to participate meaningfully in the decisions that affect their lives and the lives of their families. A safe and welcoming place for students and their families is a place that can offer the opportunity for students to thrive and to become a long-life learner because of an inviting environment. And we can see that all of you are the representation of a person that can invite and make that place safe for families and participants. A, PPS should use these moments as, to send a strong message that we support our immigrants, that we support Latinos, that we support those communities that historically have been undeserved, and historically have been prosecuted, and also in many instances, many of them live in fear. We're proud of the board members and school officials that stand on the side of hope to convey the positive message of unity in our city in times of uncertain divergence. The school, temples of knowledge, will bear witness in how do we preserve the core values to expand opportunities and to create and share knowledge for our students and families. We support this resolution, number 5363, that will make PPS a safe place where students and their families will not have to be emotionally distressed by the uncertainty of leaving a child without supervising adults to care for them in case the Immigration and Customs Enforcement decides to access school properties to remove students or their family members. Having worked previously with Oregon State University as a youth development professional for nine years, I have witnessed that peace of mind for parents and childrens can uplift and provides a safe journey of learning and contributing. A collective well-being of our community is now more crucial to achieve that unity. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Gracias.
Okay. Any discussion before we vote?
I would like to propose an amendment. Following on Ms. Reddy's comment, under point one, I would like to suggest that we strike the word "officer" and replace it with "personnel, immigration official, or immigration enforcement I understand that those have some legal meaning and get to the issue Ms. Reddy raised.
Okay. And also just the typo fix, number three, instead of INS. Two I's.
Okay. Can we make those as one? We'll make those as one amendment.
I have an old one.
Okay.
Okay. Great.
So it's been moved by Director Anthony. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Noel. All those favor that amendment?
Hi.
Hi.
Now we can have a discussion.
After you vote, it's before you vote. That's okay. I have no discussion. I was just curious.
Trying to beat you to the punch. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian. Now, is there any discussion on the agenda, on the resolution? Everybody like to say anything? You already did, Julie. Thank you.
I just, go ahead, Julie. I want to thank our staff this week for really responding and providing resources to all of our building staff to respond to the calls and the visits they were having from families and the students who came forward with fear. And I think we all pulled together to really try to equip our principals and teachers to respond compassionately and knowledgeably to the concerns that were coming forward. So we heard a lot of instances of anxiety and fear and our concerns, and particularly around conferences too, when families were coming in. So thanks to all those who have really supported everybody in all of our schools.
Good.
So, go ahead.
Please.
I just want to say thank you to all the families who have contacted us. My email box is overflowing with emails from families who are so pleased that we are taking this step forward. And I also want to thank Superintendent McCain, because he is the one who originally brought this to our attention with his daughter, who is teaching in LA, I believe. And they had the jump on us, but not much. And I want to say how pleased I am that we have this opportunity to walk our talk and show everybody the values that we have here in Portland in providing our families with a safe and inviting environment in our schools, and to have the opportunity to keep our students safe. So, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Because we know that the best that we can do for our students is to give them an education, and they can change the world.
Yes.
Absolutely. Just one comment. I have been hearing from people in the community, and also again, to something Ms. Reddy said. San Francisco Public Schools has declared itself a sanctuary district, and they are pursuing items and ideas that are similar to ours. Frankly, I think they have some more teeth. And I've been gathering information about their policy today. I will be in touch with the superintendent about that very shortly, and I am hoping that we will be able to take that step also.
So I've also reached out to organizations, so we are, we will all coordinate our efforts to, as we continue to develop the policies and processes.
Thanks.
I just want to say how proud of the Board I am. And this is an example of how much these people that are volunteers up here care about kids and families.
I would just like to say thank you to all the students who are organizing and supporting each other right now. It's like really, really powerful and really, really great work. So continue to do that.
Great.
On the other side of the coin, we have people, and I'm getting emails from time to time, from people who say this is all political. But for me, it's, it's not political. What it is for me is, I'm not a head of immigration, or I'm not on any immigration board. What my responsibility is, I'm elected to make sure that the children in this school district get a good, solid education, all of them. And we do not need people coming in and pawing through kids' records, coming into the schools, and doing the type of stuff that they said, "Let them, if they're going to do that, let them do it out of our schools." We don't need it. And so I'm voting in that light, to the truth.
Super.
When we're all done, could I make a comment on the stuff we talked about? I don't want to interrupt now.
Now's the time to talk about the resolution.
I don't want to make a comment on something related to it.
Does anybody else want to say anything?
I'd just like to express my thanks to, reiterate the thanks to staff, and also to Julie and Pam and Amy for helping pull this together this week. Really appreciate it. And it does reflect our core values as a community in general, and as a school community specifically. And it is, is well within our local rights to do this, and it's the right thing to do. So happy to support it. With that, I will call a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 5363? Say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? The resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Student representative?
Great. Yes.
Alima, voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Thank you all.
Steve, did you want to take?
We're in a personal privilege. One of the things that we've talked about is information, giving out information without parent permission. And I just wanted to point out, I'm 100% in favor of this. But at the same time, we give out information all the time, and I think as a board down the line here, we need to begin to look at this. We just had a man who came and talked about PBIS, and they want, they want personal information sent out to be in their huge database, that they already have millions of kids. And we have, we're not guarding our children's data and their personal information that's right up their alley, and we need to eventually, I think, look at that. I just wanted to get that conversation going again for the second or third time. We didn't look at that.
That really concerns me, Steve, because according to federal law, FERPA, we're not allowed to give out student information without the permission of the parents.
We do it all the time.
So I'm really surprised at that.
We do it all the time.
Would love to see the actual, what's actually happening.
Yeah, so would I. A state longitudinal database is an example. We send them all sorts of information. The PBIS people, you were all in the meeting when he sat there and talked about.
No personal.
And the PBIS guy talked about getting the information on children, and it was on behavior information. When I asked about it, he said, "It would be encrypted, but that doesn't mean anything." Everybody knows that.
He was very clear that it was detached from any student's individual identity.
It was encrypted. It wasn't, that's what I'm saying. It's encrypted, not detached. You can attach it back up when you hack it.
Okay.
And we need to look at that.
I think we'll move, we'll move on.
Can you, can she address the?
Tonight, the Board will consider whether or not to accept an appeal on step three complaint. We're only voting on whether or not to accept the appeal, the appeal, so we will not be discussing the content of the complaint. If the appeal is accepted tonight, the Board will then vote on the substance of the appeal within 30 days and have a discussion at that board meeting. Board members receive the step one and step two responses, as well as the appeal. So we will consider Resolution 5364. A majority vote yes means that the Board will accept the complaint and vote on the substance within 30 days. A majority vote no means that the Board will not consider the appeal, in which case the complainant may choose to appeal to the Oregon Department of Education. Board will now consider Resolution 5364. Step three complaint consideration. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anthony.
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Constan. Two, is there any public comment?
We have one. Maggie Lung.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Maggie Lung. This is my daughter, Annabelle Berg. We are, we want to discuss in regards to our complaint. I've, so there's several things I just want to mention in regards to my complaint. So my daughter was placed at King Elementary for the Mandarin Immersion Program. I live eight blocks away from Woodstock Elementary, which is initially what we applied for, for the Mandarin Immersion Program. My commute every day consists of me getting off work at four o'clock and then not getting home until around seven o'clock or a little bit after seven. Three hours of commute from my work in Beaverton to northeast Portland, all the way back to southeast Woodstock area. And from my understanding, when I was on the waiting list for Woodstock, I was number one. It was never, I never found out that it was in a certain bucket until around August. And I've been communicating with various staff members, and even in my email, it just, that I got from the enrollment office, it says, "You're number one for Woodstock." It never separated out that I was in a certain bucket. And so my commute, I'm spending less time with my family. I'm spending a lot of time in the car. My husband, he has to work two jobs because, due to childcare, we have to pay extra for childcare, having her childcare out there. My mom, she lives in southeast. She could pick her up if she needed to, in Woodstock, if we were placed there. I had submitted a complaint to the ombudsman back in June. I haven't heard from her since July 1st, and it's November now. And she's supposed to be advocating for me and helping me out and trying to figure out this process and procedure, and she's not there. Instead, I have to find another parent advocate within my community that helps me, that actually gets stuff done for me and tell me what is the proper process. And so I've been bounced around with many different administrators through enrollment office, through different directors, through different administrators, and I haven't gotten a resolution in regards to my complaint. I don't know if I should be applying for hardship, which was what I thought I had applied for in the beginning, but they submitted as an appeal. So I don't know what's going on. Why am I being bounced around so many times? And I'm, all I'm trying to do is get my daughter to a school that's close enough, that is with, that is what we applied for, that is what the email I got says that she's number one on the list. I want her to have a chance. And basically, it's cutting into our, our family time, and she can't do any extracurricular activities, because all the extracurricular activities, nothing is going to be after seven o'clock. I've tried. I've contacted Girl Scout, nothing is after seven. Very few are on the weekend. She used to be in swimming, and swimming would be at 5:30. And we can't make there by 5:30. We're coming all the way from north Portland to get her to swimming, and there's no way that they could stay open for us. So I'm, please, I'm trying to ask you guys to please find a resolution for us, place us at the school that we want so that she could continue her education in the Mandarin Immersion Program. Even her tonight, while she's sitting here, she's writing Chinese. She loves learning Chinese. And I, I just want her to have a chance. I want her to be like a normal little girl, have friends over that is within our neighborhood, be able to attend extracurricular activities within people within our neighborhood. And the cutoff line for Woodstock, it's only a few houses from us. The first two houses on my street is considered Woodstock. We're three houses away from the cutoff line. So I'm asking you guys, please, for my daughter, for her future, please place us closer, or please, at least place us for priority for the transfer for first grade. I mean, I don't mind suffering through this year to commute three hours every day, but I just want her to live like a normal little girl should. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any Board discussion before we vote? Steve?
I'm going to vote to have a hearing for a couple reasons. One is that we've bounced this all over for about five months, and I just think that that's how it's supposed to work. You bounce all over, you don't get through, let's have a hearing and get it taken care of. And there's, there's some other questions that would come up in the hearing to look at, I think, that you're, don't want to, we're not really... at, I think, that you don't want to, we're not really discussing that. But I have some other things that really are important to this, where we've done some things where you're not sure. And I certainly wouldn't be sure if I was Maggie trying to do it. You couldn't figure it out. I can't, I can't figure it out. So I'm, I'm going to vote for a hearing because I just think it's a fair way to do it. And I, a couple of hearings that I've gone to, the two last ones I've gone to had a lot of questions. I had a lot of questions that came out that hadn't come out previously. And I want to make sure that that's not where we're at now. There you go.
Oh, thank you. I would agree with that sentiment of the two decisions Ms. Lung has received so far have reflected a, a great deal of ambiguity and confusion in the process. And I think as a board, we have a responsibility to bring some clarity and make a real decision.
I guess I would concur that I think our processes are certainly, you know, always subject to how can we make them more clear. So it's a work in progress. So for that reason too, I concur that I would move this ahead.
Tom.
Anybody else?
I think we have had discussion lately that we are beginning a process of examining our complaint process and what is the role of the ombudsman and what is the role, you know, how do we make very clear to people like yourself who have concerns what the proper processes and how to apply policy? And I, I agree that there's a lot of room for confusion. So this is something that I care a lot about, have been in conversation with the superintendent about lately. I know Superintendent McCain has directed some staff work in the last six to eight weeks to start a process to review our complaint procedures. So Superintendent, you may want to speak to that for a moment. But with regard to hearing in this case, I, I can concur with the staff designation that the proper policies were applied in this situation. And I think about all the people who particularly apply for enrollment and transfer options other than their neighborhood school who don't get what they want and who, for whom it would be perhaps a better fit for their kid or certainly more convenient for their family. And, you know, unfortunately, we have hundreds of families like that in this district. And I feel as a board member, I need to keep that in mind when, when making these type of decisions.
Okay. Mike, you want to say anything?
I, I think this is a tough decision. I looked through the whole packet.
I did too.
And I think that the staff did an adequate job of investigating the situation and coming to recommendation. That said, I do think that we have challenges with our complaint process that have to be worked out in terms of better communication. So I don't think we're going to come to a different decision through further discussion. So I'm going to support that we don't go ahead to hear the complaint.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm going to, I, I agree with the comments that were made by Director Constan and Director Knowles. And I think that the staff work that was done on this was good. In fact, I think it was great. And the, the question about our complaint policy is something completely different than the question about whether the work that was done by staff in this particular instance was adequate or followed our regular procedures. Those are two completely separate issues. And I'm happy to hear that Superintendent McCain is going to be doing some work on the complaint procedure. We can always approve on those kinds of things. But with regard to moving the child, I think particularly also agree with Director Constan about how many families we have who really want their student or child to have this immersion experience and look forward to increasing those opportunities for our students. But for right now, I'm going to. So while, you know, I do agree with Pam, with Director Knowles and Constan, sorry, that the work that the staff did in investigating this looked really comprehensive. I just think that the, the complete process itself, because of that confusion, that I'm not sure that she was really clear on what avenues to pursue, to go about the correct way of asking for the transfers. So again, for that reason, I would move to, vote to move it forward.
All right. Bob, you want to say something?
First of all, on, on behalf of the district, I want to apologize to you, Mrs. Lung. I think it, that the process is difficult to decipher. We are, and to the, to the board to be really clear about this. I, I did solicit recommendations from the staff and actually have some of my own with regard to not only making it clearer to them, having a flow chart, potentially even hiring someone to follow the formal complaints, depending on how it shakes out. I've been basically, we're just so inundated with work, I've not had a chance to arrange a meeting with the proper parties. I know Mike is involved with this and has, you know, some other information. But I do have a comprehensive approach to this for you all. And I actually don't think it will take major surgery. It just takes clarification and perhaps a brochure at the other end to direct people to know where to go. So I want to assure the board that, that we have some things in, in, in the pipeline. I've had it now, the, the recommendations for probably a week and a half. And I've just been unable to arrange a meeting with the, the various parties, board members and such, to have the conversation to, to make sure that I'm going in the direction that the board can support. So yes, yes, ambiguity, absolutely. And again, I apologize on behalf of the district for that. Beyond that, you have my recommendations, so I won't speak to that.
Okay. Steve?
The ambiguity of the whole thing and the apology from our superintendent, who I think did a nice job and is really moving forward in the right directions, points specifically to this particular case. We didn't go through the really good process with this person. We went through a bumbling one back and forth, even though I don't think there were, it doesn't reflect on the staff. The staff was really working their tail off. I mean, wrote some nice things, did some nice stuff, but it was all over the place. And there's some things that, that have not been taken into account yet. And our point is, do we hold the hearing? It's, it's not, do we make the decision now? Is there some ambiguity where we need to hold the hearing to do it? And one of the places where there's a lot of ambiguity is how many people do we allow into Woodstock? We say it's full, but if you look at the numbers, there's some questionable numbers over there at Woodstock and whether or not it's full or not. I mean, they're highly questionable and we should look at them as a board and say, did, did we follow the proper procedure? And the other, the other place where we're really not very clear is we're not very clear about what is a hardship, what is not, and what place that it plays and what role it plays. I hope that Superintendent McCain will take that into account when he is. I'm sure he will. What does that play? But here's a person who went through the bumbling. We owe this person to have us to sit down and try and pull it all together and come up with the final solution. It may be that we agree, yeah, sure. No, you don't, you don't really have a case. We've got a lot of other people. But at the same time, it may be that we say, well, yeah, there were some things that didn't get looked at. I just told you a couple that didn't get looked at. And they were really big deals in this whole transfer. So, so that's important. The other, I kind of worry about, these hearings are supposed to judge what took place, not worrying about what might have taken place or other people. Sure, you don't want to open up the dam, but are we really opening up the dam? Do we have other people that we've sent through the same process? Do we have people? The new people will go through our new process and so they will be treated fairly if they want to come forward. We didn't do that in this case. And so I think part of this trust aspect, part of us saying to the community, we're better listeners now. And so I think one of the better listeners would be saying, sure, go ahead and have your day in court, so to speak, and go from there. And we'll see. Let's take a look. I'm willing to take the time to look.
Okay. I also read the, read it all and appreciate it. And my sentiments are, are to vote no on this and with the understanding that we do, we do have work to do. And I know that you've been doing that, Bob and Mike and Amy, I know you've been working on it as well. So we will, we will make it better. And with that, all those in favor of resolution 5364? Roll call?
Clarify what to.
Roll call? Yes, we can. So we'll do a roll call vote on this. If you vote yes to 5364, you're asking, you are saying, you're accepting the appeal and we will have a hearing of the board within 30 days. If you vote no, you're accepting the current staff recommendation.
Point of clarification, is that a hearing of the board or a board hearing? Because the board hearings that we have, we don't always attend. We put somebody else in or is this a board one? How does this?
Do you want to clarify that?
It's a hearing by the board.
It's a hearing by the board.
The full board sits down and holds a hearing?
November 25.
Yeah. Okay. Do you want, would you be so willing to call the roll?
Director Asparza Brown?
Yes.
Director Anthony?
Yes.
Director Knowles?
No.
Director Constan?
No.
Director Knowles?
No.
Director Buell?
Yes.
And Chair Kurler?
No.
That is four noes, three yeses.
Okay. So the, the resolution is defeated with the student representative, Alima?
Yes.
Voting yes. Okay. Very well. The board will now adjourn from this special meeting and we will reconvene in the Mazama Conference Room for our work session. Thank you.